Whenever we want. Okay, everybody, welcome. We got enough seats?
There's more seats up here.
More seats on the end, there's more seats in the back if we need them. All right, well, welcome, everybody, to our February 12th meeting. Glad to see everybody, and Colleen, can you start the meeting?
Yes, the meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda of public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. So as everybody probably knows, we're here for a public hearing tonight from the 118, 2024 meeting, a local law of the town of Marlboro, New York. amend the various provisions of chapter 155 zoning of the Marlboro Town Code as follows. amend the section 155-31, site plan review, and section 155-41.1 ridge line and steep slope protection. Uh, this is the February 12th, 2024 meeting. We will be getting to that. I just want to go through a few things on our regular board meeting, which is the town board meeting for February 12th, and I do want to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who've sacrificed their lives to give all of us the opportunity to serve our country and our town. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So we're gonna get to the public hearing. I just want to give some updates on the code changes and the public hearing. If you look through our agenda, what I will be doing tonight, the board and I, uh, we are gonna split the ridge line, sleep slope protection out of the original, um, code change, and we're gonna separate that from the 155-31 site plan review. And so in order to do that, basically what we have to do, it's a, a legal matter, is we have to reintroduce it as another resolution. We have to have another public hearing, and then from that public hearing, we will take more input, and then probably we're obviously gonna change what we probably introduced, and then we're gonna have to have another public hearing. So tonight, we will be closing the public hearing on the original, but you're gonna have other times to speak, just so you know. So there's gonna probably be two other public hearings on the ridge line, um, and one other public hearing on the plan review, and then we also have to reintroduce the cannabis, um, code change tonight, because as we make a change, it's a change that we made, so now you gotta reintroduce the law, because we made a change within the law. So that will have another public hearing at the next meeting. So a lot of public hearings will be coming up again next meeting, but I just want to give you a little of the background on how that works. And before we get to public comments, I'm gonna ask the board, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2024 town board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Authorization to payment of bills of $2 million, $166, 490 and 27 cents. And just so you know, from the public, you're saying, "Ooh, that's a lot of money." That's because we are paying the fire districts their money in this check. That's probably about $1.6 million of that right there, and then we have insurance payments for due, and our ambulance service, which is due. So the big part of it was the fire district, so I just need a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make it. Go ahead.
I make the motion to authorize the payments of bills?
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does anybody have any comments, just strictly on the agenda? Not on what's on the agenda, but just on the agenda? Nobody? So reports of departments of the board. So I asked that, uh, that we shrink this down for tonight, because we knew we were gonna have a big public meeting, and I asked the board, and I'll ask them again, do you have any questions on the department heads', uh, notes that they sent us out? Anybody have any comments or notes? Okay, so we're, we're, we're gonna move past that, and I do have a, a question. I want to move the reports of committees to the second meeting of the month, rather than the first meeting of the month. So if everybody's in favor of that, I just need a motion to do so.
Make a motion to move the committee reports to the second meeting in a month.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. All right, so as everybody is well aware, we have presentations tonight. I have one for the cultural resource survey, and one from the CAC ridge line review. I will, I will ask that we're gonna do the cultural resource survey first. I know a lot of people are here for the ridge line, and we're gonna get all your public comments, but I think it's very important that we actually, maybe since we have a lot of people here tonight, that it would be nice for you to see this presentation on the cultural resource survey, because it was something that has been done over the last two and a half years or so. Howard Baker from the previous board, uh, took this on, and he continued that even after the fact, and I'm gonna have Howard come on up, and, uh, he could say a few words, and then we'll start the presentation. So thank you, Howard.
Again, uh, thank you for letting me make this report. Uh, the cultural resource survey is not something I'm gonna expound upon. I'll let the experts are gonna talk next, talk, tell you about that, but it's a project that we've been working on for two or three years, basically to document the older buildings and structures in the town. And to do something like that, uh, you know, it's not something that, uh, normal people can do, requires, uh, experts to do that kind of work. So you have to pay experts, so if they do that, you have to have some money. To have money, usually you have to go for a grant, which is what we did. We got a couple of grants from the New York State Preservation League to do this work. In addition to money provided by the town board, and private citizens, organizations, businesses contributed to it, so we're able to fund it, and now, uh, we've split it into two phases. We finished, finished, uh, both phases now, and, uh, we're ready to tell you about that. But before I do that, I want to thank a couple of people. I don't know if Matt Kirstadt is here, but he was the pain in the neck kind of guy that made, kept telling us, "We have to do this." So, and he was always, also very good in getting people to donate towards it. I don't know if Ellen Stewart is here, or John Scott from the Marlboro Historical Society. They were very supportive, particularly financially. They, they gave us some nice, big checks to do this work. Of course, I want to thank Al Lanzetta, who was the supervisor and very supportive of this project. Emily Amadeo from the Marlboro Library helped, uh, these guys do their research. Steve Clark, who spent a day with us, going around the town, looking at old cold storages and all that kind of stuff, so he gave a lot of historical perspective on, on the buildings in the town. And of course, the last but not least is Rosemary Wine, who wrote the grant. She did such a good job that these guys called us back and said, uh, "Can we, can we use that grant for a model for other towns?" So, thank you for all your people, so. So now I want to introduce Neil Larson from Neil Larson and Associates. He's a historical preservationist. I'm sure I don't have the right title for you. And Marissa Marvelli, who did this work, and they're gonna talk about the, you're gonna concentrate on the work that was done in the findings, and you're gonna concentrate on the financial aspect of it, right? So Neil and Marissa, come on up.
Do you have the presentation?
Uh, was this the, oh. No, no, I have it. You sent it to me earlier. You could start, and I'll, or do you need it up? Howard, you sent it to me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's even better. That's easier.
Okay, well, um, as been said, and, and I agree with Scott, that it's, it's really good to have a nice group of the community here to hear about what we've been doing. Our interest was to, uh, you know, get as much interest developed in, in these historic properties. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a surprise, it's always a surprise when we find out how many historic properties we have, and, and what the different aspects of history are. We completed phase one, which was, uh, the, basically the Hamlets, the area along, um, the river, uh, going up to, uh, the first ridge line. And, and then in phase two, we, we did the rest of the town, primarily the agricultural, uh, properties, uh, up there. We identified over 50 individual properties that appear to be, oh, thank you, historically or architecturally significant. Nine historic industrial sites, four potential historic districts. The districts in, one in Marlboro, Hamlet, the Old Post Road, Milton-Hamlet, and North Road. And as you might expect, the greatest concentration of, uh, historic development is, you know, was along the river, although much of it's been, uh, changed or, or lost. In phase two, which we completed, uh, last year in 2023.
You could keep going, but the slideshow froze up.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's gonna work for us. And, and that, that focused on the farm landscapes, and so we brought in a, uh, a GIS specialist to, uh, to work with us, to, to help map these, uh, these agricultural areas, and, uh, and, and we did have a few exhibits about that. We'll see if they, uh, if they turn up. We want to acknowledge the work of Chris Brazi, um, who, who was a GIS specialist that, uh, worked with us. In phase two, we identified over 60 individual properties that appear to be significant, dating between 1750 and 1970. One, one thing we have to understand, particularly as we get older, that, uh, there's a lot of recent history that is now considered historic. The National Register, we use a 50-year cutoff, so anything that's 50 years or older, um, is something to consider, uh, you know, for, for something that being historically significant, so, uh, and that's 1970 now, believe it or not. We have some, some maps showing how, uh, Chris mapped some of these, uh, properties, but, uh...
Technical difficulties.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to see them. But anyway, we, in, in the report, which you can all, I mean, I imagine it's gonna be available online, if not already?
The report is, both of these reports, phase one and phase two, are both available on the town's website, and I've been speaking to the local libraries, and they're gonna make copies available in, uh, archives, archives.
So, since you may not see it tonight, at least in, um, the report, if you take a look at it, you'll, uh, you'll see some maps, uh, like this, that we developed, uh, and, uh, with a series of, 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 of themes. We mapped properties with buildings constructed between 1750 and 1819, which was essentially the settlement period, um, for the town of Marlboro. Properties with buildings constructed after that, well, 1860 and 89. And then, because of, uh, the special focus, um, in the second phase on, uh, the orchards and fruit farming and cold storage buildings, thanks to Matt Kirstadt, who, um, was a constant, constantly insisting that, uh, these cold storage buildings be recognized, we inventoryed them all and put them into, um, a context, and, uh, and, and, and mapped them as well. Both, uh, uh, both the phases, both of the reports, phase one and phase two, um, have detailed historical context for the, uh, the architecture we are looking at, and, uh, illustrated with examples of, of the houses. Yeah, oh, there you are. Illustrated with, uh, photographs of the houses and barns and properties that, uh, can be identified with certain periods and areas of significance. So... There, yeah, well... Those are pages from the narrative, uh, historical narrative for the, the phase two. But anyway, I encourage you all, if you have an interest in, in our local history and, uh, you know, uh, you know, seeing what's out there, to, uh, to read through it. It's compelling reading, I must say, as the writer of it. Now, in addition to creating this, uh, doing this survey and creating this inventory, um, the sur, all the survey data, um, not just about the properties that we found to have potential to, to be individually significant, um, you know, we looked at a lot of others, and they've all gone into a, a database, um, that, uh, New York State Historic Preservation Office maintains, um, to, uh, to essentially create a record. Um, in this case, it's kind of an initial record of everything, um, that, that we saw in the town, um, and that provides the basis for, uh, future projects to build on this information, be it to develop historic districts, or, um, you know, work on a national register property, or, uh, you know, inform planning and zoning, uh, you know, when things come up. So, um, that's, that's, you know, the state's principal interest in, in these projects, and, uh... So, we have some takeaways for the survey. One, one being Marlboro retains its distinctive sense of place through its landscape and architecture. There are numerous buildings worthy of greater interpretation and preservation, and have a vital role to play, um, in the agricultural tourism and the community at large. And, and as in most cases in our towns around here, um, the integrity of these properties, many of these properties and/or many of the areas, um, the landscapes, which I think is one of the things that issue, is at issue with things later on tonight, um, is threatened by development and unknowing, thus not knowing what, um, what is there, uh, what's significant, why it's significant, and why we should, um, you know, work to, to preserve things. We concluded with a number of recommendations for the, uh, the town to consider, uh, moving forward. First being to adopt a preservation ordinance that would create a town historic preservation commission. This, this, uh, our historic group here that managed the, the survey project, um, is, is a, you know, a good model in terms of the people and, and the, the skills that contribute to a committee like this, who can, um, keep an eye on, uh, you know, these historic properties. We also recommend that, uh, the town work towards preparing national register nominations for historic districts, um, like in the Hamlet of Marlboro, um, or, or in, uh, Milton here. These are, uh, uh, projects that would, would convey, uh, why, why these areas are significant and worthy of preservation, and would also provide the opportunity for property owners in those districts to take advantage of tax credit incentives, uh, to, to help maintain their properties. Marissa will talk about that in a minute. We recommend further documentation of the, uh, the town's industrial and waterfront archaeology, um, something that, that gets more and more ephemeral every day, or, you know, at least kind of dissolves there in the landscape, but, uh, these things that are now gone, um, uh, you know, are really worthy of, uh, of more attention now in terms of their history and their significance. Further document Marlboro's agricultural heritage, which is, um, quite remarkable, and, and, uh, something well worth preserving. Identify vulnerable and threatened properties. I think we need to keep an eye on, um, all, all buildings and, and areas that we feel are, are vulnerable to change, and, uh, ensure that, uh, you know, we're not losing the things that we have. We also thought, since we, we spend a lot of time driving around, um, that, uh, you know, some, some kind of driving tour, organized tour of the, uh, agricultural, actually, Hamlets as well, um, uh, would, would be a nice thing to do, to bring more attention to, uh, to the history, which is kind of what, um, our real interest is here. And then the last being to promote, uh, tax credit programs, but again, I'll save that for Marissa, um, to get into. So, um, we thank the town board for their support of this project, and I hope that, uh, you find it interesting and, and a valuable tool to, um, you know, to understand the history here, and, uh, you know, it's, it's preserving, uh, the valuable things that you have. We're, we've been really impressed with, uh, the level of historic resources, um, here in the town, and, uh, they all tell a part of the story of Marlboro. So I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll keep this short, but, uh, it's worth your while. Um, you might have, my name is Marissa. You might have seen me, um, out taking photos of your house, or your farm, or your barn, or your orchards. I was responsible for collecting the field data, data for, uh, phase two of this, um, project. So the National Register is, um, mostly an honorific designation. Uh, it's basically recognizing our nation's, uh, significant sites, buildings, um, uh, places, heritage, and with that comes some financial incentives. And New York State, we have about four tax programs, uh, that are available to property owners, um, owners of properties listed on the National Register. One is the homeowner's tax credit, uh, and that's for people, for rehabbing your home. The next two are the New York State and the federal, um, uh, tax credit for income-producing properties. That's basically any property that generates income. That can be a house that has been converted to apartments. And then there's also, which you don't need to be listed on the National Register to qualify, for the New York State Historic Barn Tax Credit. If you could go to the next slide. Uh, Historic Homeowner Tax Credit, that's 20% in all rehab and, um, basic improvements you make to your home. That's, basically, if you pick up a building and shake it, everything that doesn't come loose counts. So if you need to replace your furnace, if you need to do a new roof, if you need to repair your porch, if you, like, uh, there's just so many things that count. Um, and it's 20%, uh, and you can get up to $50,000 worth in credit that's applied to your income taxes, state income taxes, and you can go for this every single year. And the state, um, application form is really easy, and the state staff will work with you to make it work, so if you have a project that's more expensive, you can kind of cut it in half and file one, in one year, and then file the second half in the next year. So, next. Uh, I, I went over eligible expenses, so, uh, it's all the stuff that counts for you, that credit. It's not strict restoration. It's not like you have to say, "Oh, I'm gonna restore my house to a certain era." This is basically whatever it takes to maintain that historic house. Next. My friend had, uh, on, uh, Chestnut, is in a historic district, listed on the National Register. He needed to rebuild his porch with $100,000. This year, he gets, uh, claim a 20% credit on that work, so 20%, 20% or 20, 21,000 in, in this case, he gets the credit towards the income taxes that he owes the state. Next. Uh, for commercial properties, properties that, um, generate income, it's, uh, it's even better credit. It's 20% state and 20% federal, uh, sorry, 20% federal, 20% state, or 30% state if it's a project that's under $2.5 million. So potentially 50% of your rehab cost will come back to you. Now granted, it's a little bit more of an onerous, um, tax credit application, because it goes, gets reviewed by the federal government, government, that's the National Park Service. So it takes more time, more planning, but ultimately, the results in a better project that, because it's better planned. So all work on these tax credits must be pre-approved by the State Historic Preservation Office, also known as SHIPO. Next. Uh, I'm not gonna get into the nuance of that. If you have income-producing property and it's worthy of being, it's on the National Register, worthy of, uh, being on the National Register, you'll want to talk to a preservation consultant to see how you can make this project work for you. Next. Uh, so this is an example of a, a summer lodge house in Green County. Next. Uh, it's, it, the total cost that these owners are rehabilitating, rehabilitating the entire house, uh, for, it's gonna cost $1.3 million, and because it's under $2.5 million, they get 50% of that back. So half of the project is paid for in tax credits, federal and state tax credits. Next. And then the barn tax credit, that's a 25% credit. It's a state program run by State Historic Preservation Office. You do not need to be listed on the National Register. The barn just must be built before 1946 to qualify. And it's all basic, um, you know, maintenance, you know, roof replacement, painting your barn, you know, during foundation work counts, and there are some barns around here. Next. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you can have your point on back. Thank you. Yep, thank you, Howard. Like you had said, it'll be on our website. You can look it up there. We have hard copies, we have them here, if you want to read them. We don't really want to give them out, because we have only two, so, but, uh, we really much appreciate all the work both of you've done, and Howard, the work you guys done, and Matt, and every, all the team. It was a lot of work, and, uh, it all came together, and I appreciate it, so, and we'll take all your comments and your suggestions, and we'll see what we can do with that. So I appreciate it again, and, uh, thank you, everybody, so, thanks. Okay, so now we have, we are gonna go to public comments. I'm, I'm sure if we should do the report before the comments, I'm thinking we should take public comments first, to be honest with you. So anybody have any public comments on the code change following amended section 155-31 site plan review and section 155-41.1 ridge line, sleep, slope protection? Before we get to public comments, I do want to ask, I do have the town engineer here, Pat Hines, who's here, uh, our request of the board, so he had helped write this code for the ridge line, so I think he's very well versed into any questions you may or may not have, and I don't know, Pat, you want to give just a little preview of what the thinking was when they wrote this code, as far as the 50-foot rule and the tree line rule, and the sleep, slope protections? Just a quick overview, and if anybody, again, if you have questions, Pat's here to answer any questions you may have. And thanks, Pat.
My mustache wasn't white when we wrote this.
Yeah.
So 2005, the town adopted the ridge line, steep slope protection. Uh, it was in response to some development pressures. It was in response to some development pressures up on the higher elevations in the town. We did an analysis of the steep slopes. A map was generated. There was an elevation of 750, elevation above sea level, and above that would be that area where an analysis would be required, realizing that people have the ability to develop their lands. There were several portions of the, of the code that were developed, one of which revolved around the percent slopes and the amount of disturbance on the percent slopes. The flatter areas, less than 15% was no restrictions. 15 to 25% required a site-specific grading plan with some additional restrictions. And then there was a no disturbance limit placed on slopes greater than 25%. And a 25% slope is fairly steep. 25% slope is difficult to walk up and down. There were, the requirements for a grading plan were spelled out, the information that needs to be submitted to develop within the slope preservation plan, and there are six components of those plans which would be required. The other section, and I think that's the section everyone here is interested in tonight, was Section F, and it was the requirements for ridge protection. And the idea behind this at the time was to keep houses and other uses from being skylined up on the ridge as you're looking from the east to west. The ordinance specifically says east to west because the town of Platico line kind of runs on the other side of the ridge there, which you wouldn't have jurisdiction over. But that, those elevations were selected, again, it's for each property in there, so there's a variety of ridges there. If you looked at a USGS or a topographic map, the ridge doesn't run a straight continuum across the town. There's numerous high points and various locations along there that would have to be studied, which is why there's requirement for a site-specific plan for each of the projects that are within that ridge, and actually specifies within 100 feet. But it is that mapped area. It basically was developed at that 750-foot elevation contour from the east, and anything higher than that to the west would be included in that, in that ridge preservation area. There's some exceptions in there to make a lot not buildable. A lot of it falls on the code enforcement officer and my office to do an analysis of that. It states that if a lot is not buildable because of the restrictions, there is some relief there. But there would have to be a pretty strong analysis of proving that a lot wasn't buildable based on, on the soils and slopes and the ability to develop there. But the real emphasis on that was to keep the structures from being skylined on the ridge, and at night you would see all the lights up, running along the top of the ridge up there. There was that 50-foot elevation. In other words, the, the analysis that you would have to do would show the, the high points on your lot, and the elevation 50 feet below those high points was where you could develop. And the reasoning behind that 50-foot limit was the building elevation of the maximum building height in that portion of the town under the code is 35 feet. So rather than go 35, we selected 50 at the time. Again, this was 15 years ago, that they selected that to keep them down below. So the foundations would have to be below a 35-foot maximum building height, and it would still give you kind of a 15-foot buffer there for the trees and buildings not to be skylined along the ridge. But that's kind of a brief history of the section of your code.
The one question that came up too a couple times is, it's the ridge that you're building on, right? Not the ridge to the north, to the east, to the south?
It is. It's anything above that 700, magic 750-foot elevation, which is, it's kind of up there in elevation. It's, it's your, you know, you guys live here, you know where those higher elevations are. But it is, the analysis is done on each individual lot. Now, if you have a lot and it continues up there, then it doesn't have the ridge. The idea of this ridge is the, is the high points on each of these lots, because if you'll, if you'll, and it's easier to see if you go up on top. You go up on top of Mount Zion Road and look out, you'll see there are higher points of elevation, and then there's lower, and there's, so there's various ridges there, and that, that's the reason why you need that site-specific analysis to be.
So, an example, I think the highest point is 1050, if I remember, somewhere in that range?
That, that's, yeah, it's right around there.
But say you were on a slope, and the highest point on that ridge was 750 feet, doesn't mean you can't put, that doesn't mean you can put a house right on top of 750 feet, right? Because now the ridge behind you is 1050?
As long as, as long as, it has to crest, it has to be the ridge. It's not that continuous elevation.
So you'd have to be at the 750 and 50 feet below that 750. Is that right?
If that was your high point, yeah. 750, maybe we should go 800.
Right, 800.
750 is, is the limit there. So if you had a, if you had a lot that started at, say, 600, and it had a high point of 850, the portion at 850 and higher, as long as it kind of crested as a ridge, it's not the.
But I think there's a lot of confusion behind that, so like, if, because you, like you said, we have highs and lows. We have like seven and a half miles of ridge in Marlboro. And there's highs and lows, and the interpretation is such, maybe you don't realize, that the last sentence in that section kind of dictates that it's the site-specific, right?
Each lot, yeah.
Each lot.
It's not, it's not just picking a couple of high points.
You can't just build the high, you know, you can't say, okay, the ridge behind me is higher than my highest point, so I'm going to build on the top of the ridge here, because the ridge behind me is higher, right? I think there's been a little confusion in that. So, and then the other confusion was, well, then in the section it says I can't be above the tree lines also, so it also doesn't mean you can't put it at the top, and as long as the tree line's above me by 50 feet.
Yeah, 50-foot trees are pretty high trees, and you get up along.
You have to have some pretty big trees, but, you know, and again, the buffer is, like Pat said, there's a 35-foot normal-sized two-story house, so there was a 15-foot buffer put in, so your, your roof line wouldn't be above that.
Correct. That was the thinking then, again.
So there is a little, like, you know, the board is looking at some little more wiggle room in that, again, based on comments and things that we've been getting, but, you know, I appreciate you coming and explaining it.
Yeah, I think the important thing is it is a site-specific analysis.
Yes.
Doing a subdivision.
That's the biggie.
Or doing a site plan, the, the code specifies what information you should have.
Yep.
And a lot of it's done by default. We get, for subdivisions before the planning board, we get two-foot contour intervals on a majority of the maps, so we know when, during that process, we're looking at those, and we know the elevations. There's also, you could be building on a pre-existing lot, which would only go to the code enforcement officer, but this code still applies, they have to give us that information.
Right.
There hasn't been a lot of development pressure over that 750. In 2005, you were seeing a lot more development pressure up on Old Indian, Mount Zion, some of your higher roads up there. It's kind of slacked off, but it could occur, so that's, that was the impetus for developing this ordinance.
So what happens, like, and again, this is something that's come back from a lot of comments I've been getting. You say you're at the 700-foot level, and you're on the ridge, and you have a 15% slope or less, pretty much a flat piece of property, but basically you're at the top of your location's ridge.
Yeah, again, that, that wouldn't be regulated under this code. It's that 750 and higher.
So, so say you're at 850 and it's flat.
If you're 850 and it's flat, you're probably okay. There's probably a ridge behind you. You're probably not at the ridge. You're, you developed the plan, less than 15%, you wouldn't develop your normal grading, your normal site plan, which there wouldn't be that review between my office and the code enforcement office at that point. So there's some flexibility in your sites.
Yeah.
The code enforcement officer can refer those to my office. It states that either, either the code enforcement officer or the town engineer can weigh in on these, and typically Tommy and I work very well together.
Yep. Well, I mean, a good thing came out of this, I tell the public too, is, you know, that we don't have anything in our SBLs that tell us that a property is right on the ridge line. Like, so I've asked the, the code enforcement officer and our assessor to work together to come up with a plan, so like, if someone comes in that doesn't have to go to the planning board, right, that just has an approved lot, pre-existing lot, that they, it would trigger that review right away, right? So that, you know, because sometimes the code enforcement officer may not know, right, right off, right off the bat, that it's in that ridge line.
You know, the datum they use for their topography most of the time.
Right, which is then going to cause the property owner, because what we're going to have to do is now ask them to give us all kind of more information of their actual location, their topos, their heights, so there's going to be a little more burden put on to the applicant for these applications. But that was something that I think came really positive out of this. So we actually now will have a, a plan set in place between the assessor's office and them, and then, of course, you have to be involved. Like, a lot of people don't realize, once you get above that 15% slope, and there's any questions, no matter what on the ridge, our engineer, Pat, is going to be involved in every one of these, and he has to sign off on these. So it's not, it's not as simple as just, okay, I'm getting a building permit and build. So it's, it's a little more difficult than it. And I also want to make sure people understand, you can build in the ridge, because I think a lot of people were under the illusion that you couldn't build in the ridge at all, that the code that was passed in 2005 basically said, there's no building in the ridge. You can build in the ridge, but it's very difficult to build in the ridge. In my, my, my opinion, the 15% slope is the biggest obstacle to get over than anything else. So, and then the 50-foot rule was more of the aesthetics, as you're saying, from the visual perspectives, but they're there for a reason. You know, we just had a study done, and they were talking about our, you know, our beautiful properties in the town of Marlboro, and the ridge is part of it. So, again, I'm going to open up public comments, if there's anything that you specifically want, a question for Pat, he'll stay for a while.
I have a question for Pat before he goes.
But go ahead, absolutely.
Pat, we've heard a lot of public comments over our last few hearings related to, no worries, that's okay, related to run, water runoff and drainage on the, on the ridge, and the effect that the removal of the 50-feet barrier would have on that. Can you speak to that a little bit? Are you, I think, just said that the 50-foot really was more for aesthetic purposes and not so much water-related?
Yeah, that's where that number came from. Stormwater management is a challenge up there. Soils are thin when you start disturbing vegetation. If you disturb more than an acre of property in your development, or cumulatively in the development, it'll kick into your town stormwater regulations that mirror the DECs, so there's a review that gets undertaken. Less than an acre disturbance on a site doesn't get a site-specific stormwater management look at. But if you're starting to grade on slopes that are 15% or 15 to 25, just your grading plan alone is going to rapidly exceed that one acre, so that there'll be the need for, between one and five acres, your code and the DEC code require a stormwater pollution prevention plan that only has an erosion and sediment control component. Greater than five acres residential would require water quality and quantity control. But you have those mechanisms in, in your code, a little more stringent than the DECs regulations, and they would kick in at that point. Where you, where we run into some, some checks and balances issues is, is the existing lots, when they're not before the planning board and getting that more technical review. But Tommy, your code enforcement officer, I'll often call me up and refer me to those to me to take a look at.
So in your opinion, I guess the question was, is, is if, if the 50-foot rule was moved somewhat, in your opinion, from a stormwater perspective, stormwater perspective, it's not that much of a significance, more than the slope?
I don't see as much of a stormwater issue as the aesthetic issue of, you know, really the intent this originally in 2005 was that skyline, you know?
Yep.
You know, if you can see Connecticut and Syracuse on top of the ridge there, you'd probably kind of be a little offensive to, to the people down below.
Yep. Anybody up here else has any more? All right, I'll open it up to the public then. Just when you come up, we're going to give three minutes or less, and you guys have to state your name and your address for the clerk clearly, so she could put it in the records. So who would like to go first? Anybody? Let's have John, come on up, John. I have a little handy-dandy timer now. See, John, I got you three minutes up there.
Good evening. I'm John Scott from 96 Mount Zion Road. There are 14 local and state small protected areas and five major protected areas along the Hudson River. If you go by train or boat up or down the river, the west shore has no building on it at all. There's been no development because of most of these regulations. As far as a 50-foot clearance from the top, with today's GPS and smartphones, it's very easy to determine a height, so it's not a big deal. I'd like to leave this with the board members.
Yep, thanks, John, absolutely.
You lead one for the clerk.
Here, I'll pause you. Thank you, John, appreciate it. You have two there? Anybody else? You have an extra one there, or no?
Do you have an extra one?
Yep.
Hello, Ted Millar from Milton. I just have two quick questions. I will definitely not need three minutes. My first question to the town board is, why is there such urgency to change the ridge line law? And my second question is, should town board members with property on the ridge line recuse themselves?
Why are we looking at it? Because a property owner came up to the planning board, and a question came up within the planning board process, that then triggers a review by the town board.
I don't think we're hurrying. This is the third time we've had it open for the public. We're not rushing.
And if a property owner is a property owner and their ridge should be recused, that would be up to the council member to decide that for themselves.
And I know that's directed towards me, Ted, so I won't be recusing myself, just to make that clear, so you don't have to ask that question anymore.
Okay, I was just asking in general.
I know, I know, but I know it is also directed to me, I'm not stupid.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Come on up, sir.
My name is Jay Agnew, and I live at the top of Old Indian Road. I'm currently a little confused on this issue. I've lived here on the banks of the beautiful Hudson River my whole life, one of the most beautiful river valleys in the world. It has many houses along it. I can't wrap my mind around the fact that a few houses on the ridge would be dangerous or ruin the view for the whole town. My family and I know, work for, and support many of our local businesses. I highly doubt it's a legitimate concern of theirs that the changing landscape would discourage customers. My view is from the mountain, so what if I don't want to see houses down below me? Should we stop building in Marlboro completely? I was born here on my maternal grandmother's family farm purchased in the 1870s when I was four. I moved to a property continuously owned and occupied by my family since the bond patent in 1710, which was the second on record in the area. Through the years, many acres were sold to farmers, developers, and other people carving out their corner of this beautiful area. What if my ancestors acted like this? The bond patent included over 1,000 acres that now belong to my fellow townspeople, whom many I consider my friends. My parents still live in the home built by my family in 1745. Who are we to say? You pay for your property, you pay your taxes, but you can't carve out your corner of the world on it because it will offend someone. I personally feel the objections to amending or removing the Ridge and Steep Line Slope Protection Act is a personal vendetta against my sister and brother-in-law by a select group of people who have circled their wagons. If these parties were genuinely concerned, there should be no fight against upping the zoning to five to 10 acres per lot. Most of them won't even see it, because they've already carved out their own piece of this ridge. They act like it's going to look like San Diego, yet most would not have the time and/or resources to do what Stephen and Carrie are doing. There's no K in Carrie. This will be a project costing well over $1 million, and frankly, I would love the extra tax dollars for the town and would support multiple single-family homes on the ridge over the condos that will only contribute to the gridlock on 9W every single weekday morning and evening. Let us as a community work on the real problems facing us. When do we stop being able to compromise? The opposing parties have been bombarding us with their narratives without supporting their claims at all, and at the very least, let the townspeople decide as a community through a public vote. We could all use a break on the taxes. The Ridge Line Act is a joke. It's not supported by science or any environmental studies, or in my opinion, the majority of this town. Any further development should only help with runoff, because holding ponds and proper drainage would be part of any project moving forward. At this point, the water takes the path of least resistance, the path it's been taking before any of us were here. And we've all seen how that works lately at the three main water crossings of Latin Town Road. My family farm was recognized as a bicentennial farm in 1976. Eight years ago, my aunt, uncle, and mother sold that farm. It broke my heart, but I didn't own it, I didn't pay the taxes, and I surely couldn't afford it, so I didn't get to tell them what to do with it. I feel my opinion shouldn't be the deciding factor, and the town should vote as a whole since it affects every single one of us. Thanks for putting up with me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Merrill.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jake Marrow. I'm 25. I was born and raised here. I live and work here currently in Marlboro, and my fiancee and her family are the farmers of Quimby Farm, which sits at the base of Mount Zion Road beneath where this proposed building project would take place. I'm here tonight because on this matter, there have been many assertions made about what young people want for their town's future, and I think there's also been some conflation of issues here, so I'd like to speak about what I and the other young people that I speak with would like for the future of their town. I don't think anyone here wants to tell a land-owning citizen of Marlboro what they can or cannot do with their can or cannot do with their property. That is not what this is about, and it certainly would not, it's not what got me out of bed and up here speaking today. What this is about is it's about ensuring our town continues to protect the Marlborough Ridge and its surrounding environment. It's about staying true to our master plan and preserving the beautiful sights and rich agricultural lands that make our town what it is. To get rid of the fifty-foot provision entirely and hope that the rest of the code will continue to protect the ridge just appears irresponsible, maybe even malfeasant, especially when there have been so many other reasonable options proposed. The Ulster County Planning Board suggestion is to review these types of projects on a case-by-case basis, which is a bit of what you all talked about earlier as well. Reviewing on a case-by-case basis, I think, many would be more comfortable if it wasn't just based on the aesthetics, if we did know that it wasn't going to affect the environment beneath the building project. But the point is, this is a reasonable path forward that just requires the town and the developer to conduct some proper due diligence. It's my understanding that the planning board did offer to compromise on the exact distance of the fifty-foot provision rather than have it thrown out altogether. Again, this seems to be a prudent approach that would balance the interests of the landowner and the community of taxpayers and farmers around that landowner. With these options readily available to you, I hope that our town board members do not toss this fifty-foot provision out entirely. I think it would be short-sighted, I think it'd be an extreme solution, and I think it would actively ignore expert opinion and the interest of our homeowners and farmers below the ridge. In a time when many of our young people do not believe that their representatives act in their best interest, in a time when many of our young people believe that their representatives are self-serving, I ask that you take the prudent approach, proceed with caution here, and just act on these reasonable options and compromises that you have at your disposal. In doing so, you can clarify our regulations, strengthen our protection of the ridge, and still leave an avenue open to developers, to develop, as long as they do their proper due diligence. I ask that you do not choose the extreme option here. All I'm really asking, though, is that you set the example, show the young people of Marlborough what a bit of good government looks like, because we don't get to see it in this country all that often, and I really fear that we're not going to get to see it here as well, and I hope you all prove me wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I've got a lot of people, anybody? Because I've got a lot of correspondence to read. Come on up, sir.
My name is Dan Heavens. My wife and I own Forty Mountain Road roughly eight hundred feet of the ridgeline, Nightingale Farm in Quartz Rock. Appreciate the town board leaving a public comment open. Focus of these discussions should be on the future impact of additional properties along the ridge rather than one single property. Why do I bring up additional properties? Because weakening the ridgeline protection will encourage ridgeline development, as the town board confirmed was their goal during the January eighth meeting. The goal developers will be purely financial as they try to maximize their return on investment. In other words, they'll cram as many lots as possible along the ridge. Our farm leading up to the ridge, we grow grapes, apples, peaches, cherries, quince, other stone fruit, berries, some vegetables. Our farm is dependent upon an irrigation system that pumps water throughout our fifty-four acres. What are the effects of additional wells once the ridge is subdivided? Probably not good. The quality of the water could degrade, the performance of the well would decrease, so during dry years, our farm will suffer. In addition to our irrigation well being affected, the current retaining pond of the Trunkali subdivision is insufficient even without houses. What happens to the runoff when houses are built and additional subdivisions are approved? What happens with additional septic systems? How does that affect water quality? We won't be able to answer these questions until years later. Will our wells be compromised? Will we need to install water treatment systems? Will we need to install an entirely new irrigation system? Will uncontrolled water runoff further damage our trees, vines, and buildings? Farming faces many challenges and threats in itself, and we don't need the town to add to that list. We are against any threats to our farm, and we are struggling to understand how weakening the ridgeline protection law isn't anything but a threat. And I have one last point to make. What's important to the younger generation has recently become a talking point. While I'm flattered some of you might think I'm part of the younger gener, generation, I'm not. The younger generation is at home right now finishing their homework, or their, their basketball game, brushing their teeth, getting ready for bed. Hopefully, some are already asleep. I think we can all agree that everyone here wants what's best for the future generation. It's important to remember the younger generation is watching us, how we behave, what we say, what we do, and what we post on social media. They're learning from us. That's a massive responsibility, and we need to keep that in mind as we determine what's best for this town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else out there? Come on up. Cindy, that's you, okay.
Actually, I've spoken a lot on this issue already, and I know we're going to have a really good presentation by the CAC that'll go into some more detail as to why we're here tonight. I had a couple of questions. First is, could you tell me who the legal counsel is that's working with the board to amend these codes?
Megan Cohen.
I'm sorry?
Megan, your same one that's for your planning board.
Um...
Clemente, Megan Clemente.
Okay. And also, oh, first of all, I'm supposed to make sure that you understand that even though I'm on the Ulster County Planning Board and I'm on the town planning board, I am not here representing the planning board in any respect. But I do have a question, too.
Cindy, can I interrupt you for one minute? I'm glad you said that. So I'd like to address Mr. Millar. When he insinuated that I should recuse myself, I'm not, wasn't representing the town board when I wrote that article in the paper. I'm representing myself, just as you're representing yourself. So I'd like to make that clear to everybody in the audience. Thank you.
So anyway, this present code has been in existence for eighteen years, and I'm just wondering if Mr. Hines could answer why it is that the law was brought up as questionable at this time?
I have an answer for that. The town board stated to look at the code during the planning board meeting, we had an applicant wanting to place the house on the top of the ridge, which spurred a lot of conversation regarding the regulation. I could have outlined the site, a number of planning and town board members and code enforcement officers could have outlined on the site, and that was the impetus to begin the conversation. I don't have, I don't know either way, I was involved in writing the original.
Yeah. During those discussions with the applicant that you say spurred this, was it made clear that the present code would not allow any building on the top of the property?
It's my opinion that the house location of that site we're talking about does not comply.
Okay, so the applicant had a clear understanding that under the present code, that would not qualify as a house site?
I can't speak to the applicant's mindset. It was my opinion that the house on the site was a top.
That was any discuss, you said it was discussed during the application procedure, during the application procedure at the meetings. Was it made clear during that time that it was unlikely that they could put a house directly on top of the highest point of the property?
I believe that's a fair statement, yes, but it was noted that the plans in the corner of the appliance with chapter one sixty-five, forty-one, twenty-one.
Okay, so, so that was clear, and yet, we're still entertaining a, changing this law to add additional clarity?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just because one person's clear on it doesn't mean the other three people are clear on it. If you talk to Patty Brooks, who's that applicant's engineer, had a different interpretation of that. So yes, there was multiple interpretation differences on the same lot. And Pat, was that not an accurate statement, that Mrs. Brooks had a different interpretation of that fifty-foot rule? That's an accurate statement, thank you. That's why we're here today. Anybody else have a question? I'm going to read some correspondence that we got on the ridgeline. This is from, let's see, okay, "We have lived on, lived here for forty years and loved being on Mount Zion. The Santini family have been great friends and neighbors. Steve Santini is a very hard worker and very smart businessman. I support his efforts to build a beautiful home on our mountainside. Sincerely, Fred and Mary Lynn Giammetta." Hello, Mr. Supervisor Corcoran. I am Giselle Grunwald, and I am living on Old Indian Road for the past twenty years. Marlborough is a beautiful town, and I feel very privileged and happy to be making my home in such a special place. The issue of changing the law on what can or cannot be built on the near the ridgeline of the Marlborough Mountains, I think, has rightfully stirred up discussions within the town. First, I would like to salute you and your staff for not only encouraging the discussion but also giving generously of your time to have the pros and cons of changing the law brought up, out in the open. The pros I have heard are seeing an increasingly development in the town, which is seen as a positive for future and particularly younger generations. I agree with the thought and principle what we regret development in areas only that it does not cause harm, either aesthetically or ecologically. And here I want to salute you again because I am seeing plenty of recent development in town, mainly in around nine W corridor, which is fine. The cons have been an ecological, uncontrolled runoff, mudslides, et cetera, et cetera, which cannot speak to, but I am sure that your staff will be able to advise professionally on this issue. For me, the most important and significant con is the issue of changing the look and character of the town in the Marlborough Mountains ridge become open to development. I'm sure the thinking was behind enacting the original protection law in the first place. In my view, the change of the law, which could open the ridge development, would frankly and short-sighted and irreversible. If you look into how some of the neighboring communities, such as Gardner, New Paul, Schwang, Englewood, Cliff, Hudson, Times, over the individual commercial interests and concerns. So for me, my appeal to you is please do not change the existing protections of the Marlborough ridgeline with kind regards, Giselle Grunwald." Okay. Dear town board members, I am writing with my concerns about the imminent change of the ridgeline protection law. I am urging the board to take under serious consideration not dropping the current code from the ridgeline protection, but make clarification so both the planning board and applicants have sunset direction on what was permitted. If the law is dropped, it will open the floodgates for other developers to clear the ridge and encourage previously-approved subdivisions to reply and updated plots, which would allow crestline development. By the way, of example, I've included a portion of the two thousand and two Trunkali subdivision plot, which is, clearly shows several issues on top of the ridge. The intent of the master plan and the code is not to only protect the view shed but to protect the surrounding properties from flooding and runoff. The future property owners from incredibly steep driveways, septic system failures, worries about fire safety, emergency vehicles. Access and letter from the chief bore this out when writing the Santini roadway would need regular maintenance to keep it open for emergency vehicles. How would this be accomplished? Are there notes on the plans to insist on regular trimming? Would the buyer be made aware? Who takes responsibility when something unforeseen happens? The town, question mark. I implore the town board to take their time and work with the CAC to rewrite the code clearly in a way that protects all the residents, future buyer, subdivision, farmers. Thank you for your attention. Lisa McKinley McKay. And I got the subdivision. I think this is from Doug. Comments from the public hearing, the ridgeline debate and comparison. The question is not, do we remove the fifty-foot elevation buffer at the ridgeline or keep it? The following is a hypothetical example which demonstrates my point. John owns a vacant one-acre lot in the town road. His lot measures one hundred and fifty feet wide and three hundred feet deep. The narrow dimension faces the town road. The planning board has approved this lot for buildable, but the house must be situated toward the near or lot due to a formative rock outcropping located in the front and north side. The view, however, would be far superior if John could place his house closer to the road. The view happens to be on the Marlborough ridge. John would like to capture the mountain view, so he summons the building inspector to see what could be done. The town has a forty-foot minimum side lot setback. John wants to place his house twenty feet from the side lot. Due to rock issue, the building inspector says that he cannot approve the requested location, and it would violate the code. John's neighbor Sam owns a lot immediately to the south, so they share a common border. Sam built the house five years earlier, following all codes. The house is located fifty feet from the common border. Sam expects any development on John's lot to meet the same code. John is not satisfied with the building inspector's answer and pursues other municipal avenues. For reasons not clear to the casual observer, the town decides to eliminate the side lot setbacks. Building codes are put in place to provide the public safety, personal safety, and protection on the environment, as well the town's image and beauty. Would you elect to eliminate the foot, forty-foot setback? It is highly unlikely, and this is not difficult than remove, uh, different than removing the ridgeline vertical buffer. My point is that the code is in place for a reason. Building codes and laws are put in place to provide uniform standards and better goods for the community. Please read this at the February twelfth meeting, and that's from Doug Glort on Reservoir Good evening. I am writing to express my thoughts regarding ridgeline topic. I am in support of building along the ridgeline as long as it is for residential use. I can understand protecting our ridgeline against corporations, but seeing local families expand their lives here should bring joy to the community. We are creating memories and instilling the Marlborough town values by allowing new growth. I believe the family should be allowed to build along the ridgeline. Thank you for your consideration, Morgan Rusk. Okay. Just want to make sure this is the right person. Dear Supervisor Corcoran and Town Board Members, our names are Catherine Brady, Lisa Defanzio, John D. Ventono, and Jenna Lazaroff. We work, oh, this is, sorry, that's something different. I got too many ones in here. I know, I was going the wrong way. The Town Mar, Town Board of Town of Marlborough, I am a Marlborough resident. I have made aware that the ridgeline protection law is at risk. I am against the law being changed. Our countryside and the mountain views should be, not be destroyed. We have responsibility to protect the future of the ridgeline. There is no individual above this. Nicole Bergar. You can see, I got a bunch of them. Please read this aloud at the public hearing, February twelfth. We are against any weaken on the ridgeline protection law. It would inevitably lead to destruction of the most valuable asset, which is Marlborough's irres, irreplaceable ridgeline. Robert Alinda LaPristi. Dear Town Board Members, I am thirty-nine-year-old and resident of Marlborough. I grew up here and have decided to raise my children here. I own a business in the town, I work in the town, I love the people in this town. I love where I live. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. I oppose change in the current law to allow the development of the Marlborough ridge. I would be false to claim that allowing development upon the Marlborough ridgeline is a call for generation and what young families of Marlborough want. The young families of Marlborough want to stay in Marlborough. We want affordable housing, affordable childcare, quality education, community engagement, clean air, clean water, and the ability to enjoy the beauty of Marlborough regardless of cynical class. Only the wealthiest will be able to develop the ridgeline if the protection is removed. If the board decides to remove the protection of the ridgeline, it will be because of greed. However, if the board decides to keep the current protection... However, if the board decides to keep the current protection, expand on those protection, it will clear that the board works for all the people of Marlborough and not the privileged few. I look forward to slipping, uh, slipping, sipping a hard cider at weed's, looking up the pristine Marlborough Mountain Ridge with my family, knowing we live in the most beautiful place. The Marlborough Mountains Ridge connects us all in the wealth of beauty. Thank you for your time. Tessa Di Bella. Please, I read this one, right? Yeah. Okay, Scott. This is just directed to me. Says, "Scott, I know the town needs growth, but we also need to protect the beauty of the town. Please save the ridgeline. You don't know what you have till you lose it. And I can never be brought back. Also give an inch and they will take a mile or more." Thank you, Barbara Ann Black, 27 West Marlborough. So this one was, I'm forwarding you this email. I was sent by a friend from Mickey Simonowski regarding the issue of the ridgeline. I request that it be read on the record at the next Town Board meeting. And this is Paul Ellis Graham. Marlborough is a community known for its scenic beauty, going back generations. Many residents and businesses alike who made and still make their, the home have done so for this very reason. Likewise, previous town and planning boards understand the local laws were necessary in order to protect the land and the right of those living and doing business here and expect reasonable development that will not drastically alter the beauty of the place. Recent removal of trees atop the ridgeline apparently violate an existing ordinance that was put in place to serve the public good. While the private property rights and landowners are important, they are not sacrosanct. I can never say that word. Yep. Controls are experienced so that one person's desire does not negatively impact the right of the privilege of many. There was a reason to require the dwellings located near the ridgeline began no less than 50 feet from the top of it. In addition, recent changes in climate may also necessitate a revision of current codes and washouts become more common. Going forward with new development continuing in a rapid pace, the Marlborough Town Board Planning Board needs to closely examine building projects within the town and the plan for future environment factors which may or may not negatively impact the beautiful places we call home. Everyone deserves a place to be heard. I will recommend that full discussion of these issues be addressed after citizens' inputs by the appropriate governing body. Sincerely, Paul Ellis Graham." That's Ridge Road, Ridge View Lane. This one I read, this one I read. That's the PTA. I think I got them all. I think I got them all. I put the three-minute timer on myself now. So that's all the comments I got in my emails. If I did miss any, they will be in the public record. I will give them to the clerk. If I get further ones, I will give them to the clerk. I want to give one last chance. Any other public comments?
Do you have a speech on Patty Gilmarten? Do you have anything?
You have to come up. I can't hear you. You have to come up. I'm sorry. And then we're recording too, so it's like, thank you.
I'm concerned. My name's Patty Gilmarten. My husband's Tom. We live at the end of Penny Lane. We look at this beautiful mountain every day. It's priceless to us. Once you develop it, destroy it, we never get that back. We both moved here from suburbias with views. You always knew what your neighbors were cooking. No views, I should say. We feel genuinely blessed to be here. We love Marlborough. And it breaks our heart that the rich can build these homes on top of the mountain, look down on everybody, and not have any concern for the beauty and the destruction they cause. So, short and sweet, we oppose the removal of these regulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Again, I just want to state, you can build on the ridge, right? You do understand there's building on the ridge right now. Regardless, if we change this law or we don't change this law, if, you know, if we left it as is, they could still build there, right? I just want to make sure everybody understands it because it seems like I've been getting a lot of people that call me, think that building on the ridge was banned. That's not the case. You could build on the ridge. Basically, you just have to be 50 feet below the ridge at this current code, right? That's it. But you could build on the ridge as long as you meet the 15% slope, maximum 25 with the engineers and the code enforcement approval and all the drainage. And again, you also have to meet all the setbacks, border health approvals, all the things that a normal property would meet. So it's very difficult regardless, building on the ridge, right? So, again, just to reiterate, you can build on the ridge. So it's not that you can't. You can. So, all right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the board for this, to actually ask for a motion to close the public hearing on local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending various provisions of Chapter 155 zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows amendment section 155-31, site plan review, and section 155-41.1, ridgeline and steep slope protection. And I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So again, as I said in the beginning of the meeting, there's going to be a reintroduction of this, so you're going to have another opportunity to give public comment. But before we get to that, we do have another presentation by the CAC, and this is also on the ridgeline review. So I'm going to ask Mickey Simonowski to come up. As the representative from the CAC, who is a group that the town has asked to look into this for us, you know, we are taking this seriously, and we are looking at every avenue of input. And the CAC had additional meetings besides our meetings, and I appreciate you guys doing that. They put a very, you know, detailed-oriented slideshow together and a lot of comments. I got a report to read that's 85 pages long, so I'll, 58, okay. I'll be reading it this week, so I'm going to let you.
You probably, not to interrupt you, but you probably read half of, from pages 26 to 58. You probably read that or heard that tonight, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good.
We made sure we included comments that we had heard or received.
All right. So I think I got this up right, right?
Okay, thank you. So I just want to start off with actually reading the code, the definition, excuse me, of the ridgeline as is in Town Code 155-41.1A3. The ridgeline protection area is defined as the area on the map known as the Town of Marlborough Ridgeline Protection Map, adopted with this code and any subsequent amendments. The ridgeline of the Town of Marlborough shall be generally viewed as the high points of the ridge, commonly known as the Marlborough Mountains, as viewed from the east in a westerly direction. So that, hopefully that clears up some of the confusion of the definition of the ridgeline. So, thank you for the opportunity to present our comments to you and the public. A full written report in PDF form, this one, is being given to all the board members and will be available to the public as well on the website. Next slide. We want to emphasize that the Conservation Advisory Committee, the CAC, is a neutral entity. We serve as a partner to the Town Board, and none of our comments are intended to favor any individual or any one's specific point of view. Rather, we have gathered as much information as possible in the few weeks we have had to help the Town Board create a better code. That is our job. Slide 3. We are confident in telling the board that an enhanced and improved code will serve the entirety of our community, individual landowners living both on and under the ridgeline, the planning board, our town engineers, and all enforcement agencies and departments. Next. On December 11th, the Town Board presented an amendment to local law 155 for a public hearing. Two clauses in that code are suggested to be amended. The CAC placed our attention on the removal of the 50-foot height restriction on the ridgeline, which would impact our natural resources. Slide. As is the law, the Town Board opened a public hearing on January 8th, when many comments from diverse members of the community were heard. Several people asked why this change was needed. Many pointed out that our comprehensive master plan dictates protection of the ridgeline. The Town Board extended the public comment as part of our request to give the CAC additional time to prepare comments. Next. All the CAC meetings are open, but we met to center on this subject on January 11th and again on January 20th, when the public was specifically invited. Both were well attended. The insights and suggestions of our residents are valuable to the board's understanding of the public thought. They are much appreciated. So thank you, everybody. Next. The public remarks have been recorded and have been made available by the CAC for the Town website. In addition, our written report includes various written comments to be, that we received, but all centered on three areas in regards to conservation issues: aesthetic concerns, environmental concerns, and the comprehensive master plan. Next. The CAC carefully reviewed the 2002, 2017, and 2022 versions of the master plan. These plans were very expensive to prepare. They utilized professional and legal advice and had extensive public input. They are the legally adopted standard to be used for all planning, zoning, coding, and enforcement needs of the town. They were confirmed and agreed to three times by three different town boards. It is the master plan that must be followed in any additional or changed wording of any town code, but specifically in regard to today's issue. Next. All three versions of the master plan clearly define the ridgeline as being one of Marlborough's most valuable natural resources. They place the ridgeline with equal importance to our farmlands and agritourism, always the main economic drivers for our town. That is why the original master plan, slide? The original master plan states on pages 52 to 53, "When development occurs on ridgelines, an unnatural element is introduced, which interrupts the horizon and is unaesthetic. Any new construction on hillsides should occur below the tops of ridges, such that structures do not appear on the horizon." That's from the code. Next. Also on page 52, it states, "Natural resources are significant for the local economy. The unique combination of natural conditions that occur locally, soils, climate, slopes, are ideal for the production of orchard crops and are the reason why the apple industry became established in Marlborough. In addition to being important to the local economy, the natural resources of Marlborough provide an aesthetic landscape which is an asset to the community." Public comments in favor of protecting our water sources, waterways, drainage, the aquifers, soil quality for our farmlands, wildlife, and forestry issues were voiced, as well as the importance of the aesthetics of a continuous uninterrupted ridgeline. Next. Residents respectfully shared their views, but helpful visuals were volunteered as well. This one illustrates the difference between tree line and ridgeline, perhaps the two words presenting the confusion in the present code. Example B shows the intent of the master plan and reflects our present wording. Next. The second graphic compares a structure that sits below the tree line on the left and on top of the tree, the ridgeline on the right. A structure extending higher than the ridgeline is clearly not the intent of the comprehensive master plan. Next. Equally important was an explanation and a suggestion of a potential code improvement that would give a qualifying measurement to be used for the baseline measurement for structures. There is an easily available app called MyAltitude that could be used as a planning and an enforcement tool. The gentleman found it in the National Geological Maps database. Next. We have submitted references of several different approaches that other communities have adopted as ridgeline protection. Wording from their codes could be integrated into improved code wording for our town. Next. CAC members reviewed comments from the Town of Marlborough Planning Board, the Ulster County Planning Board, and the Ulster County Department of Soil Conservation. Those documents are included in our written report. Next. We viewed comments from Sina Hudson. Perhaps their strongest statement is, "Removing the specific numerical guideline currently imposed by the law would risk creating further uncertainty in enforcement and potentially weaken the law's protections. This is clearly not the board's intention. You have stated you want clarity in any new wording." Next. We reviewed several maps. These visuals can help us to see how much land and what types of properties are affected by the ridgeline properties themselves. Next. The CAC is focused on issues concerning our natural resources, and we have centered on environmental issues. However, the ridgeline is one of our natural resources as stated in the master plan. Public sentiment repeatedly voiced concern that taxpayers will bear the cost if appropriate measures are not included to protect the ridgeline from clearing and deforestation. Next. Potential litigation costs to taxpayers was a topic of discussion brought up by many. It would be wrong not to consider potential financial consequences for the taxpayer. Next. The CAC is recommending that the Town Board discard the wording of the ridgeline protection code as proposed at the public hearing, and continue to investigate wording that will enhance and strengthen our code. We suggest that the board should propose two separate amendments to consider for adoption. Thank you. In regards to the ridgeline protection code, the board should discard the present amendment as worded altogether and create an improved, nonambiguous code with the guidance of our town engineer, town attorneys, and qualified professionals. And the wording should follow the intent of the comprehensive master plan. Next. The code should include clear definitions for ridgeline, tree line, structure, buffers, and especially include a point of measurement. Qualifying and/or quantifying language for enforcement standards should be included. And please consider neighboring communities' ridgeline protection laws for specificity and language to use within our own town code. A strengthened code will place safeguards and directions for the protection of the ridgeline while giving applicants, landowners, the town planning board, and enforcement officers the guidelines to follow to ensure proper development and land use outlined in our comprehensive master plan and its updates. Thank you for your attention. Our written report will provide much more data and information and has been provided. We hope you find our work useful, and we also thank the Marlborough community for sharing their comments with us and participating in this process. And one last note, the CAC stands ready to help you any other way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
You could ask as many questions as you like.
So, thank you, Mickey. But in your, your presentation, I noticed when we got to the point where you had some renditions of what the ridgeline and the tree line is, you kind of stumbled on your wording when you went from ridgeline to tree, to tree line. So maybe Pat can help me out here. In section 155-31, does it mention ridgeline and tree line?
It does.
So it, can we all agree that that's confusing, or is it just me? Because you yourself just jogged your words up there. It's on tape. We can watch it.
This is why, apparently this is what.
This is a confusion. This is a confusion.
If you read the entire Code 155, it's not as confusing as just taking the two sentences as the amendment presents. It's much more easy to understand tree line if you read the entire chapter of 155.
But is tree line the same as ridgeline? That's my question. It's not.
But, as you look at that picture, the ridgeline is the ground, it's the bottom line. The tree line is the above.
That's the way I interpret it. Yeah. That's the way I interpret it, yes.
But I also think that, per Pat's comments, you know, when we discuss this here in this room, we all envision the ridgeline to be one continuous slope that goes up and there's a finite top and you can easily measure these 50 feet, right? We've heard it in how many different comments? And Pat just explained to us, right, that it's not that simple and it's not that straightforward. And there's crests, and there's low points, and there's all of these varying distances. So it looks really easy on this piece of paper as we sit in this room, and it's not nearly that easy when you're out actually on the ridge or when you're reviewing the plans. And I think that's the part of this that keeps getting lost in this conversation, that, you know, nobody woke up here and decided that our life's mission was to encourage development on the ridge. None of us, none of us came to the table with that goal. I don't think, I mean, guys, jump in if I'm saying anything crazy, but that's not, that's not what we're after here. We're trying to make this more understandable so that it can be applied fairly to the residents of Marlboro, instead of every single one of us reading the chapter and coming up with something different and trying to measure it from a different point where we just heard that the project engineer measured it completely different from the town engineer. And we're getting into these very, very confusing conversations and situations. So I just really want to clarify for the public that no one up here is, you know, plotting to make this ridgeline covered in homes or covered in any crazy development. We're simply trying to make this an understandable process so that when our residents do want to build something, that we can all, we all understand what the rules are.
Yeah. And again, there's not many locations on the ridge that can actually be built on currently in that section. So, understand, we're not talking about where people think we're going to have development, there's going to be 100 houses built up on the ridge. It's not going to happen. It can't happen. You know, you're missing the other sections of the code. You're only looking at the one section of the code. There's many other regulations within that code that stipulate where you can build and how you can build. And again, I go back to it, the slope, the slope, the slope. The slope, to me, is the most important protection in that code out of all of it. The slope of 15% to 25% is your savior in my eyes, as far as where you can build and the protection from erosion and water runoff and things of that nature. Because if you go above the 25%, yeah, you're going to have tremendous amount of runoff of water. That's why the code says you can't do it. So, again, there is protections in the law no matter what. And, uh, I don't know, Pat, do you want to...
Yeah, I think your point, this code does not break the statute.
Right.
One section of your entire zoning code.
Right.
You know, for example, for driveways are covered in there.
Right.
More management regulations, you know, other portions of your zoning code also are enforced. In fact, all this is just specifically to the ridge.
Yeah, this is just specific to the ridge, but like Pat said and I said earlier, all the other codes of building a house on a normal piece of property also apply to that property. So the setbacks and all those things that you would normally build on a normal, the ridgeline just has an extra protection. Again, not that you can't build in the ridge, you can build in the ridge, you currently can build in the ridge without a problem, but as you've seen since 2005, how many houses actually have been built in the ridge? Not many. Why? Because it's extremely difficult, extremely expensive, and there aren't many properties that you can actually build on. So again, we're not talking about opening up Marlboro to, you know, sky rises and townhouses up on the top of the ridge. It's not what we're looking to do at all, and we're never going to look to do that. These are residential homes, people own property, you know, you got to also see both sides of the story, which we do, is if you own a piece of property, again, why can't I build on it? Well, there are regulations on all properties, right? There are limitations on where you can build on, no matter where, what property you own. So, um, we understand that. So, I just wanted, like, in this visual, B is the actual one, right? Pat, just to... B is the one. So let's just make that on note, that B is the one that our current code would actually say is the right one. So it's not 50 feet from the top of the roof, it's 50 feet from the structures...
From the structure.
I would say foundation or at grade. At grade, right? I just, the thing is, it's confusing a little to me, too, is why do you have the 50-foot and then you say, but it has to be above the tree line? So it's like, to me, that's kind of a weird thing, right?
50-foot is very defined in the code. You can track that out anywhere.
Yeah.
And then, you know, there's another section that said development should be cited by a challenge, it should be enforced as a subject. The 50-foot elevation below...
Is a hard line.
...is a defined survey point you can identify.
So, you know, let me, I'm just throwing this out there because we got a lot of people here tonight. So, you know, what if I did have a ridgeline that was here, and then I had another ridgeline directly behind me that was, you know, 100, 300 feet higher? What would be the harm if there was a house on the smaller ridge? If you're looking at a visual, your eye goes to the top of the main ridge from a distance, right? That's, that's the only thing I, you know...
One of your code requires an individual plan.
Right.
For all lots above that 750 USP.
Right, it has to be above 750 feet, right?
I hate to say it, but you drive around and you look at the ridge, and the color of the house makes the biggest difference on what you can see or not see.
That's a big part of it, too, that we're looking at, exactly. The colors of the house, you know, that's part of it, so...
If you're talking about the 15% and planes that are required here, great line, drug line, or more management, all of that, at what stage in the development process do you work? Shovel it to ground? Absolutely. So, it depends. At the planning board level or subdivision, it would be a depth work, but there are pre-existing locks up there that would then go, would not go to planning classes until it just go for a building permit at that point. Okay. But if it's a subdivision, you have to work shovel it.
You have to. I don't, you have to. It's going to go on for months.
It's not. It's a skid by a gauge base of it. The example we're talking about, now there's a lot that's 18 acres in size, they didn't have a house location. The planning board, they didn't have a house location. And it's noted on that plan that compliance would, because they didn't go in yet, because they said they didn't have a house. Compliance with this section would be required prior to this. So if you start selling property, would that come with you a creative ask? No, I don't believe so. You can't do that. But that is not...
Okay. We're going to have more public comments after, but I know John had one quick question. I got to move on because I got other business we got to take care of, too. So go ahead, John, quick.
I have one comment. Small water models are major concern. In December, a major rain, a couple inches of rain for several hours. Nega Road was closed in half-time, road by 95, uh, between heavy form and, uh, the hillside was flooded bad, and the road's been damaged considerably. Had to close things though because of flood.
And, yes, that's happened.
Scott, can I just ask one question? I didn't have time to really look at the agenda, but you did say that you're reopening, you're proposing the amendment change.
We got to reintroduce the...
Is it the exact same wording?
It's the exact same law. So what we're going to be, again, you know, guys, if you don't want to stay, because we're going to reintroduce these laws but separate, it's the exact same change, you know, that we recommended prior. Again, that then triggers another public hearing, and then when we make our changes, there're going to be another public hearing and another. So you're going to have many more times to voice your opinion if you want. But what we're going to introduce, because that's how we originally, we're just separating them, right? It's the exact same wording that was in there prior. The only difference in the cannabis law, and again, if anybody was here for the cannabis law and had opinions on the cannabis law, we did look into, the board recommended to me, after public comment, that we move the establishment's distance to 1,500 feet, which we all were in agreement to do. We had our attorney look into that, and by regulation of the New York State, we're not allowed to do that. The furthest distance that we can actually make an establishment is 500 feet, which is that was in the original code. I actually had her also verify that with the associations of town, and they concurred and said, yes, that is the regulation by New York State law. But you can put other, so the only thing we're changing in that is it's going to stay 500 feet, but we're also adding town buildings and town parks, which wasn't specified. So that's going to be introduced with that one change. So, um, yeah, so...
In regards to the ridgeline, though, might it be more prudent, because there's so much public comment, to perhaps think about different wording altogether to include everything that people think?
Well, there will be. That's going to get changed once we, we have to separate it first.
Yeah, but you're separating, but the wording is exactly the same.
Yeah, because that's how you have to start it. And then we're going to have public hearing again, then we're going to change the wording, then you got to have, introduce it again with the public hearing. Because we're not going to just rush it. I want to take my time and make sure we get the wording right.
So I didn't understand the process. I thought that you could reintroduce, that you could just, you could make a motion to defeat this proposition.
No.
And as amended, and then create a brand-new code and have it.
This is the way, Megan said this is the right course to go. She said split them up, reintroduce it, get more public hearing, and then we'll get the more public comments, and then we're going to have time. Look, the ridgeline change, I could tell you right now, isn't going to get changed in the next month or two, okay? It's going to be a while before we decide how we're going to put the wording in, and that's why I want to separate these two out, and that way we could get the other code changed. But it's going to be months. It ain't going to be...
We just bought number one of ours.
Yeah. So, all right. All right, so I give everybody, if you want two minutes, three minutes, if you want to vacate, you can. If not, you could definitely stay, but it's up to you. Thank you. I'll take a quick break. And Pat, you're dismissed. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Jerry, do you have any water in there? I got any water? Something? I got it. I was Manny. I should ask them questions. Sorry, you made me Manny. You made me Manny.
It was nice enough to help out, he just watched it.
You ever do that again? Yeah, I know. You two, take care, nice seeing you. But never make me Manny, anybody but me. Not only that, he's, that was Manny Calvi, she just changed. I thought you were my buddy.
What? Do you want to go down?
I don't care. As long as I'm not Manny.
See, I wrote the stop means...
He's just giving it too much, too much. They don't really have a choice. What? Who? Want to get a drink? These people will leave. He's obviously getting something to drink. Maybe it's apple. Dave left. Jerry, Dave's gone. Nothing, they just impeached you. They impeached you.
They impeached you?
You! They impeached you.
I'm not binding, man. I'm far from being binding, dude. I can remember and I can lash out, man.
You weren't here, so they impeached you. They impeached you when you were outside.
What'd you think of the game last night, dude? Did you watch it?
The end was good. The middle was terrible.
The first three quarters were terrible, but first half was terrible.
I'll tell you right now, Mahomes did what I thought he would do at the end.
Yeah, he came alive.
Did you see the call Andy Reid made for the touchdown?
Yeah, I thought in the beginning he was getting paid off.
I thought like three quarters of court. Where was that place three quarters court?
I know, but, you know, they stopped San Francisco's with one touchdown on that fake funky play. Otherwise, they never scored.
Yeah.
How you doing, Pat?
Good.
Good, how are you?
I was switching, I was going to go earlier.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Pat. It was just like, uh... Normally, I would get in kind of a work, but they have a house.
Really?
I don't understand what Scott is saying. He says to the grid, you can build, you can build.
All right. Three blocks. You can build, you can build on the grid, you can build the grid's preservation zone.
So he wants... Everybody's going to leave, can you make your way out or going to restart? Really?
No. I'm surprised.
Oh, look, this one's canceled.
Does he have it?
Yeah, just yours. You're allowed, you have to go. You got the special one. The one they de-iced.
So he's just being stubborn.
Yeah, give us some, give us some suggestions, because you know...
Oh my God, is that Bob? It is, it is Bob.
All right, thank you. All right, now my correspondence, I have a couple requests, so now I'll read the right one, Cher. Dear Supervisor Corcoran and Town Board Members, our names are Kathleen Brady, Linda DiStefano, John Nadevino, and Jenna Lazaroff. We work for class advisors at the Marlboro High School for the class of 24, 25, 26, and 27. We have been working with the PTSA and school community to create a new event for our high school students over the past few years. We have seen a need within our community to help support our students when it comes to milestone events such as proms. Our students would benefit and appreciate the event where they could receive gently-used prom attire at no cost to them. We would like this event to be a magical and special one for the students. If it's possible, we are looking to obtain the use of the Milton train station to hold the special occasion on either Saturday, March 2nd or March 9th. We appreciate anything the town board can do to help us create this affair for our students and community. If you have any questions or concern, feel free to contact Jenna Lazaroff, and she gives me her email and her phone number. Thank you for taking the time to consider our event. We look forward to partnering with the town to help support our local community. Thank you again. So, I know they talk... So, I know they talked to the clerk's office, and those dates are available, so I would need a motion by the board to allow them to use the Milton Train Station either on March 2nd or March 9th, depending on which date fits their needs best. And I'd need a motion and a second, if you want.
Make the motion that we let them use the train station either May 2nd or May 9th? I mean, March 8th, 2nd, or March 9th?
I need a second.
I'll second.
You second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move. All right. Now, I got one from Touch a Truck Festival, and this is from the M E S P T A also. Event purposes, M E S P T A would like to host a free community event for the families of Marlborough School by also fundraising to help cover the cost of the $40,000 budget. We are proposing the idea of hosting a Touch a Truck Festival at Clue at Shance Park. A touch or trunk event usually hosts a variety of different trucks for families to come see and explore. The P T A will be raising money through the sponsorship and vendor spacing. Event details are followed. I'm not gonna go through all the details, but basically, they're doing a fundraiser, and they would like to use the park. And...
Yes, it's June 22nd is the date.
Yep, June 22nd, and rain date is June 23rd. So I need a motion, if the board would like, that'll have the M E S P T A utilize the Clue at Shance Park.
I will make the motion for the M E S P T A to utilize the Clue at Shance Park at no charge on June 22nd for the Touch a Truck event.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you. Kyle, you'll get ahold of them, right? And let them know? Uh, just so you know, I was able to go to the State of the County address for Jen Metzger this February 6th. It was a very nice event put on up in Sorogades, and I could tell you, Jen's doing a great job up there, and she's got a lot of great ideas for the county, so she's, it was a really cool event, so. Also, I've been working with D O T for the last year, and I finally got put on the ticket that they are gonna, for next year, not this year, so hopefully they stay on there. They will be re-sidewalking Route 9 W from Bayside Drive, which is where the Bayside Road comes down, and they stopped, and it's gonna go from Bayside Drive all along the west side of 9 W all the way to King Street. They're gonna repave, I mean sidewalk, all the way down there. So, again, that's gonna be in the spring or summer of 2025. So, let's hope they keep that on the docket, so. And again, I've been working with Senator Hinchey's office. Emma's taken over. We've been working at the turning lanes. I have G P I, giving me some estimates on turning lanes, and we're also looking, again, at Old Indian Trail, so we're still moving forward with those. Uh, old business, it was the Tomback. Again, I'm not gonna reiterate what I've been saying, is we're moving forward. Everything's looking great inside, and I would expect the inside will be done in a month. There's tiling, all the bathrooms and everything right now, so, uh, all the I T stuff's in. I really wanna give a shout-out to the chief. He's been really helping me out over the last two months. When I can't make it there, he goes there, or even Gary Lazaroff also, you guys have been great, so I just wanna give a shout-out to the chief. He's my right-hand man there, so thanks, chief. And, okay, so highway items out for bid. The highway is gonna put out some of their old equipment, and they're gonna, they're asking us to advertise. They actually put this in an auction company now. We've been using them for the last few years, and they're asking us to have a motion to put on the auction site a 2013 Ford F-250 pickup and truck with the plow, a 2003 Smith Series Eleven Sander, and a 2004 Smith Series Eleven Sander. We've been doing very well by using this auction site. A lot of municipalities use this now, instead of just putting it out to an open bid to the public. We usually get, like, at least five to six times more this way. So, I just need a motion by the board that we allow the highway department to put these... Uh, we pay a slight fee when it's sold, and it's automatically taken out of the sale price. I don't know what the percentage is, off the top of my head, but it's, again, we've been getting a lot more for these than, but I forget what, I, I, I could get it for you, Eddie, though. But I, I know there's a little fee. So, is it all right that the board would approve them to put these on the public auction site?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to allow...
Fifteen percent, okay.
I make, I make the motion to allow the highway department put on auction the vehicles for sale.
I just need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Okay. I think items are good, I got that. All right, so this is a big one for us. C S X agreement for the Milton Land and Park. There's a lot of agreements that we gotta sign with C S X in order to get the Milton Land and Park project completed. This is another one, this is the construction agreement, and in order to have us do the construction work that's needed down there, that we passed and awarded the bid to Nicky Diggs about three months ago. Since we're working in C S X right-ofways, they require their engineering, their oversight, their flagmen, their foremen, their people to be on-site at the whole time. We cannot get past this. We've been fighting it for two months. I cannot get past this. So, this construction agreement is put together, and it's through the construction period, but we have to put in, it's basically like an escrow account, we have to give $42,631 to C S X for their professional services. Thirty-five thousand, five hundred of that is for engineering and oversight. The rest is for laborers and foremen and flagmen and such. But we cannot move forward with this Milton Land and Project, again, which we have over 500,000 in the grant, to actually do this project without signing this agreement. So I'm asking the board that I'm allowed to sign this agreement, and we set up this account to send to C S X so that we could get this project moving. So, there it is. If not, we can't do the project. I would need a motion.
I make a motion to, for a C S X agreement to sign.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Eddie seconded it. All in favor? And I know this is a tough one, guys. Look, this is a tough one that I fought, but there's about four other agreements we have, easement agreements that have to be put in place, and, uh, we're, right now, we're, they're actually wanna charge us a yearly fee to use the new crossing, because it's their property, and I've been fighting that one, so we may actually have to pay a one-time price to basically buy the property for the crossing, so it's ours. It's just, it never stops. C S X really just doesn't want us to be down there, but, uh, we're not gonna give up, but we're working on it. Jerry Kamados has been working with me and John Behan, so we're moving forward, so thank you very much. Correspondence, I did. Public comments, anybody else have any other public comments on anything else that we would like to discuss? We had a very nice public comment session tonight, so. See, this is what I'm used to in here. All right, so we're gonna go to the resolutions, and again, this is pretty much reintroducing all of them. And having said that, it's, they're the exact things, I'm not gonna maybe, oh, I could probably read most of this one. So, Resolution 26, this one is different. This is not for a resolution. So Resolution 26 is a right-ofway of a public highway for Cupboard Drive. So Cupboard Drive is a, a broke town road that we took over, but there's an agreement that has to be put in place that we're actually, believe it or not, need to be able to plow the road. We have to have an agreement in place so that our highway department could go on that road. I talked to John Alonji, he's in agreement with this easement. Talked to our attorneys, they wrote it up for us. So this is basically an easement agreement that we're allowed to go on this property, and we're allowed to plow the property and take care of the property. So Resolution 26 is to accept the perpetual easement and right-ofway for the public highway purposes over certain portions of Cupboard Drive, and authorize the supervisor to sign the appropriate form. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the Town Board has received and proposed easements for highway purposes as well as the New York State T P dash 584 pertaining to a grant and perpetual easement of right-ofway for the public highway purposes over certain portions of Cupboard Drive in association with the site plan application for Key Mom Inc. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Town Board accepts the grant and perpetual easement and right-ofway for the public highway purposes over certain portions of Cupboard Drive, and more specifically described in Schedule A as attached to the proposed easement agreement, and authorize the supervisor to sign the T P dash 594 subject to following conditions being filed by March 1st, 2024, absent which acceptance of the grant of easement shall be nullified. A, properly executed and recorded instruments as follows, easements for highway purposes filed at the Ulster County Clerk, and two, T P number 584, payment many outstanding expenses of the town and deposit a sum sufficient to cover costs of recording instruments with the clerk of the county. The acceptance of a four-month easement shall be effective February 12th, 2024, in the event of the fulfillment of the conditions set forth in paragraph one here and above. The foregone resolution was voted upon with all members of the council voting as follows. Yes.
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 Thank you. Resolution 27, to reintroduce the local law of the year 2024, a local law of the town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, men in chapter 155 zoning, article six supplementary regulations governing certain uses, section 155 dash 31, site plan review of the Marlborough Town Code. Oh, boy. This is a long one. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas on December 11th, 2023, the Town of Marlborough Town Board introduce a proposed local law of the town of Marlborough, propose an amendment various provisions of chapter 155 zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows, amend in section 155 31, and you're gonna see, it's gonna show both that, this and the ridgeline. 155 31, site plan review in section 155 dash 41.1, ridgeline and slope protection, combined local law. And whereas on December 12th, 2023, the combined local law was referred to the Ulster County Planning Board, and whereas on January 3rd, 2024, the Ulster County Planning Board submitted comments to the Town Board on both proposed amendments and the combined local law. And whereas with respect to the proposed amendments in section 155 dash 31 of the Marlborough Town Code, presented in the combined local law of the Ulster County Planning Board recommended as follows, rather than give all projects four years, Ulster County Planning Board recommends granting a planning board discretion or determine the completion timeframe, or better yet, setting thresholds within the law, swear footage, error, disturbance, secret impacts, et cetera. Whereas a four-year completion timeframe would trigger and give applicants the public greater sense of transparency and review. Whereas the Town Board of Town of Marlborough referred the combined local law to the Town of Marlborough Planning Board according to Town Code 155 dash 49, with comments being received on January 8th, 2024. Whereas about January 8th, 2024, public hearing was held in the combined local law, and where the sustained changes, substantial changes have been proposed to the combined local law resulting in the separation of the proposed amendments into two separate proposed local laws. And whereas the Town Board of Town of Marlborough reintroduces these proposed amendments in section 155 31 of the Town of Marlborough Town Code as set forth hereon, being acted the Town Board of Town of Marlborough, that the Town Code is amended as follows, section one, section 155 dash 31 K of the Town Code of the Town of Marlborough is amended as follows, deletion is stricken as underscored. So now we're reintroducing this section of the code, which will be open to public hearing. This is K, expiration of approval site plan review, and approval shall be void if construction is not started within one year and completed within, it's gonna be changed from two years to four years of the date of the final site plan approval. Each of these respective periods of expiration may be extended in the planning board discretion for up to, it's gonna go from two to three additional periods of one year each. The planning board authorize, uh, authority, oh, God, authority to extend the respective periods of expiration shall apply at any project with requests such as extensions and writing filed to the town no later than on January 1st, 20, uh, 2008. Okay, the rest is the same. Revised that the public hearing be held in relations to the proposed changes set forth in the form of notice hereon, provided hearing parties interested and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard. The public hearing will be held on February 26th, 2024, at 7:00 PM prevailing time, and that the notice of said meeting shall be published in the official newspaper of general circulation of the Town of Marlborough by the Town Clerk at least 10 days prior to such hearing, and the notice shall be as following form. Take notice that the Town Board of Town of Marlborough will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall facilities at 21 Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, on February 26th, 2024, at 7:00 PM prevailing time, and proposed local law number, and that gets numbered later, of the year 2024, a local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter 155 zoning, article six supplementary regulations governing certain uses, section 155 dash 31, site plan review of the Town of Marlborough Town Code. Take further notice that copies of the fore-said proposal law will be available for examination at the offices of the Clerk of the Town of Marlborough, 21 Milton Turnpike, New York, 12547, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on all business days between the date of this notice and the date of public hearing. Take further notice that all persons interested and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposed time and place after said. And foregone resolution was duly put to vote and resulted in the following. Yes.
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 Thank you. And I apologize, I'm trying to read fast, but. All right. Resolution 28, to reintroduce the local law of the year 2024, the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter 155 zoning, article IX, administration and enforcement, section 155 dash 41.1, ridgeline and steep slope protection of Marlborough Town Code. So it's the same, the beginning is exactly the same as what I just read before. It actually showed, it tells you what we had said before, where it was combined. Okay. It tells you where we went to public hearing on January 8th, which we kept it open all the way to now. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough reintroduces these proposed amendments in section 155 point 41.1 of the Town of Marlborough Code as set forth hereon, being acted that the Town Board of Town of Marlborough that the Town Code amends as follow, section one, section 155 dash 41.1 F4 of the Town of Marlborough Code is amended and read as follows. So again, it's exactly the same as what we introduced prior, where the, what was stricken out was the, no structure that is subject to this section shall be located closer than 50 feet in elevation to the ridgeline affected by the applicants as determined by the town engineer. So that's what was introduced prior, but combined, and what is gonna be reintroduced now as a single standalone, again, which is now open for public comments again until we make our changes. And then also B was gonna be strucking out, there shall be no disturbance within 50-foot area except for access driveways when said driveways cannot be reasonably located outside the 50-foot area. Again, stricken out in the original, stricken out in this one. These are all the legal, if pursuant to section 22 of the state municipal rule law. And that the Town Board has determined that the action of the men of the Town Marlborough zoning laws is a type-one action under the New York State State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and whereas that because only the Town Board can consider and adopt changes to the Town Code, that is the only involved agency, and the Board hereby declares that it is the lead agency for purposes coordinating with environmental review of the matter pursuant of articles eight of environmental conservation law. Whereas the Town Board has already referred these amendments to the Ulster County Planning Board for review as set forth above, with comments having been received, and whereas the Town Board has already referred this matter to the Town of Marlborough Planning Board with comments have been reviewed and set forth above. Supervisor Corcoran advises the Town Board that pursuant to municipal law rules, uh, law of the state of New York, that is necessary to hold a public hearing upon the law, he offered the following resolution, which was seconded by Councilman, it could be person, Malinelli, who moved for its adoption, whereas on February 12th, 2024... Malinelli, who moved for its adoption, whereas on February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Supervisor Corcoran introduced this local law for the Town of Marlborough to be known as Town of Marlborough Local Law, and it'll be numbered when we finish, of the year twenty twenty-four, a local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter one fifty-five zoning, article I X Administration and Enforcement, section one fifty-five dash forty-one point one, ridgeline and steep slope protection of the Town of Marlborough. The public hearing will be held on February, that's twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock P M prevailing time. At that notice of said meeting shall be published in the official newspaper of general circulation of the Town of Marlborough by the Town Clerk at least ten days before such hearing, and the notice shall be in the following form. Again, the notice of the Town of Marlborough, of the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall Facilities at twenty-one Milton Turnpike, New York on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock P M prevailing time, proposed local law number of the year twenty twenty-four, a local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter one fifty-five zoning, article I X Administration and Enforcement, section one fifty-five dash forty-one point one, ridgeline, steep slope protection of the Marlborough Town Code. There's a lot of redundancy in these things, isn't there? Take further notice that copies of fore-said proposal local law will be available for examination at the offices of the Clerk of the Town of Marlborough, twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, one-two-five-four-seven, from the hours of eight A M and four P M on all business days between the dates of this notice and the date of the public hearing. Take further notice that all persons interested and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the time or the place offered set. The foregone resolution was duly put to vote, which resulted in follows. Yes.
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 That's not it, Eddie. We've got one more. You wanna take a break, Ed? Come on.
Good.
All right. I think this is it, Eddie, yeah. Resolution twenty-nine, now, this is the cannabis law. To reintroduce the local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending various provisions of chapter one fifty-five zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows, amending section one fifty-five dash one, adding definitions for cannabis, cannabis establishment, cannabis onsite consumption establishment, cannabis products, cannabis retail dispensary, section one fifty-five dash twelve, use regulations, and adding section one fifty-five dash thirty-two point five, cannabis marijuana retail sales and lounges. And if anybody that's new out there is asking why we're doing this, it's because the state now passed that these establishments are legal, and we don't have this in our codebook, so we have to regulate it in somehow, some fashion, and we have to define it in somehow, some fashion, and that's what we're basically doing here, is we're putting it in our codebook so we can actually regulate where these facilities are within our town. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the proposed local laws were introduced on about December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and whereas on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the proposed local law was referred to the Ulster County Planning Board with comments being received on or about January third, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough referred the matter to the Town of Marlborough Planning Board in accordance with Town Code one fifty-five dash forty-nine with comments being received on January eighth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas about January eighth, twenty twenty-four, the public hearing was held for proposed local law. And whereas substantial, whereas substantial changes have been proposed to proposed local law, any changes are shown below in red resulting in reintroduction by the Board of the Town of Marlborough that the code amended as follows. So, what changed from the original is what I had stated earlier. Let's get down to here, is right here. So, we were gonna change this section right here, six cannabis establishments should not be located within, we were gonna make it fifteen hundred feet, but we are not allowed to do that, and I was gonna show you my email if I had it here. It's right here. Upon looking further in the regulations, a municipality is not permitted to adopt a local law which allow an adult-use retail dispensary, micro-business registered organization with dispensaries R O D or onsite consumption license to be on the same road within two hundred feet of an entrance of a building occupied exclusively of a house of worship, on the same road within five hundred feet entrance of a building occupied exclusively as a school, or on the same road of within fifty, five hundred feet of structure of the grounds occupied exclusively on the public use facility. The regulations further provide the distance requirements for the public use facility cannot be greater than five hundred feet. So, basically, they're telling us we can't go more than five hundred feet. I did have her, I don't know if I have that here. I did have her verify that with, with the state, and they concurred, and that's why we are still keeping it as five hundred feet. Unfortunately, trust me, all the Board members wanted to make this five hundred feet, but what we did is, we added any town building or town park, so that eliminates a few more spots that these locations can go to. We're trying to, you know, we don't wanna promote any kind of these types of facilities around children of that, or anything like that, or people coming into public buildings or parks and things. I mean, it's just, you know, but this is New York State, and it's legal, so we have to regulate it as best we can. So, that's the only thing that changed, but having that one change is considered a substantial change, which means we have to reintroduce the law, and that's what we're doing tonight. Everything else stayed the same. Okay, resolve that the public hearing will be held in relation to the proposed changes as set forth in the forms of notice hereon, answer provided in which hearing parties of interest and citizens shall have opportunity to be heard. The public hearing will be held on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock P M prevailing time, and the notice of said meeting shall be published in the official newspaper of general circulation of the Town of Marlborough by the Town Clerk at least ten days prior such hearing, and the notice shall be as following form. Notice of public hearing, take notice, the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough holds a public hearing at the Town Hall Facility at twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, seven o'clock P M prevailing time, proposed local law number of the year twenty twenty-four, a local law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending various provisions of chapter one fifty-five zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows, amending section one fifty-five dash one, adding definitions for cannabis, cannabis establishment, cannabis onsite consumption establishment, cannabis products, and cannabis retail dispensary, section one fifty-five dash twelve, use regulations, and add in section one fifty-five dash thirty-two point five, cannabis marijuana retail sales and lounges. Take further notice that the copies of the fore-said proposal local law will be available for examination at the offices of the Clerk of the Town of Marlborough, twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, one-two-five-four-seven, between the hours of eight A M and four P M on all business days between the dates of this notice and the dates of the public hearing. Take further notice that all persons interested and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard in said proposal at the time and place offered set. And the foregone resolution was duly put on vote, which resulted as follows. Yes.
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 Begrudgingly, yes.
I know, we're all not happy. We're all not happy tonight, come on. And Eddie, I give it to you now, my friend.
I just wanna say, I had to listen to Scott long enough tonight, so I'd like to call from the German.
I need a second.
I'll second.
I'll third it. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night, and thank you all who stayed. Very nice. Thanks, C I C. Good job. All right.
Tell me why you think that all of these flights are canceled to Seattle tomorrow, except for those three, one of which is mine.
You're going, baby.
This is so annoying.
You're going. You're going.
Yeah, that's crazy.
That's so annoying.
That's great.
That's so annoying.